Okay, can we get started? We can only finish if we get started. Okay. I'm going to call this January 4th, 2024 Planning Commission Meeting Order. Let's start out with a roll call. Saad Safabian.
Here.
Carrie Bosworth.
Here.
Mike Briscoe.
Here.
Mark Baughman, I am here. John Bachman.
Here.
Ajay Jakrapani.
I'm here, thank you.
All right. And Sudhi has an excused absence, so she's not going to be here. Next is our meeting accessibility statement. Let's do that.
The public is welcome to attend Planning Commission meetings in person at City Hall, 801-228th Avenue Southeast, or virtually through Zoom. In accordance with the latest Public Health Guidance, masks are recommended but not required for in-person attendance. Public comments. Each speaker is allowed up to three minutes for non-agenda comment, five minutes of representing an organization, and seven minutes for agenda public comment. For those providing comments through Zoom, once you have dialed into the meeting, please virtually raise your hand to indicate you would like to provide a public comment. Your mic will remain muted until you are called on during the public comment period. To get public comment via Zoom, join the webinar via the link To get public comment via mobile or landline telephone, dial the following number: us+1-253-215-8782, webinar ID 828-226-48794.
Thank you, Julian. Next is approval of the agenda for this evening. Anyone have any comments about the agenda? We'll call the agenda approved. Next is approval of our meeting minutes from December 7th, where we reviewed the PROS Plan, Parks Recreation and Open Space. Any corrections to those meeting notes or comments? No comments or corrections, so those meeting notes will be called approved. Next, non-agenda public comment. I will say that our agenda this evening is a bit self-serving because it's all about us, but if you have something that's not about us that you'd like to public comment on, now's the time.
Good evening, Planning Commissioners, Paul Stickney, Samamish. I sent in a copy of this non-agenda comment, so I'm not going to read through it exactly. But I do want to say that because of false premises in Samamish, and I say that without anger, 85% of our houses were built by King County and 15% by our city. And neither King County nor our city has really analyzed to what degree does housing supplies that exist meet the needs of those in our community over time and for future generations. I'm looking to rectify that. So a lot of the things in the email I sent you, you've seen, but not necessarily in this order. And I do think it's important for people to recognize in Samamish that that over 19,000 of the 22,500 homes that exist in the city were built by King County that had planning policies over a much larger region and didn't plan for the geography that is our city. And in Samamish, since 1999, since incorporation, the city has allowed about 3,500 homes and most of those large single-family and about 500 multifamily. So my false premises isn't said with anger or meant to be to create an argument, but our housing supplies have not been analyzed to how do they meet people to stay over time. So that's what I'm looking to fix for what I call lifestyle and legacy. For people that want to stay in the community over time and for future generations, what's the right mix of housing? And I would suggest, if anybody goes back to the middle of 2018, to take a look at a housing roundtable that came to Samamish during Samamish Homegrown from an industry panel, wonderful discussion on these topics, on what would you do over if you could start from scratch. So I'm going to speak on the agenda comment to some specifics in a solution that I haven't shared before, but I will just say now that the housing shortages in Samamish relative to lifetime and legacy is about 10% to 15% of our shortage, is prices from $175,000 to $500,000, which are 80% area median income and lower housing. About 70% to 80% are from $500,000 to $1.2 million market rate, and about 10% to 15% are over 1.2 in condos and townhouses for those that want larger ones that our city doesn't have. So I'll come back and do the second part during Agenda.
Thanks, Paul. Anywhere else? Mary?
Good evening, Mary Victor. Been in Samamish 23 years. I had emailed you, and then I emailed an update on speed limits. It's something that I saw. I grew up in Bozeman, Montana, which is a very similar-sized city, growing also about the same amount and very likable and livable. And one of the things that they did is they've had enough accidents with pedestrians and bikes and cars and people getting hit and deaths of even a beloved high school teacher that they had an outcry that said, "We know you haven't prioritized this, but safety first. We need to do something." And my husband does walk a lot in this city, and it's kind of like a death walk for him every day because he wears all sorts of glowing things the police compliment in what he's wearing, and there's just way too many people driving too fast, ripping around and not looking at corners. So the statistics that I saw in Bozeman that were presented by the Engineering Transportation Director there were very good, and I was really amazed. And it was such a good thing that they chose to do. They did it unanimously. Everybody voted for it, and they had a lot of input from people. What they did is they studied speed limits, and they said, "Why is vehicle speed important?" There's this chart that I emailed you today. I hadn't done it on Tuesday. It's basically an exponential curve, and it goes from 15 miles an hour to 55 miles per hour. And at 50 miles per hour, 75% of the people will die if hit. And then between 35 and 45, that's where the curve is really steep. So 35 miles per hour to 45 miles per hour, you've got such a difference in the bikes and the people and the cars that the people are not going to usually survive. But if you're going 32 miles an hour, only 25% of the people will die, which is a huge drop from the 75%. And if you're hit at 23 miles per hour, 10% of the people will die. So what they did in Bozeman is they chose 15 miles per hour, and they said for all schools and all parks where people go during the day, after hours, there's wildlife, there's community events, we just want it to be 15. And I even sent you a copy of one of the images that I took. It just says park and it says speed limit 15. So it's very consistent, so people don't have to go what time of day it is, is it a high school or whatever. It's always marked wherever the parks are and where the schools are. And they did for all the schools, including the high school, which we also have here. So I think that you should really look at it and consider it. I know it's not a topic. It'll never get to be a topic if somebody doesn't speak up and say, "Hey, we reduced speed limits for construction zones two years ago, renewed that because it worked so well, and we said on drop-off times we can reduce it to 20, but if you don't go, let's look at these statistics. It matters." So their summary was, if you just drop 10% in speed, like 40, 10% is four miles per hour, so go into 36 or 35, you reduce fatalities by 38%, and you can reduce serious injuries by 27%. And when they saw those numbers, they just said, "You know, it's consistent. It works. It's practical. It's intentional. Did not take a lot of staff time." And all the signage in the city only cost $15,000 to update in Bozeman. So thank you. You should have it as an email.
Thanks, Mary. I will point out, I just looked, and Bozeman is 19 degrees and snow plurries, so just as a point of reference. Do we have anybody online or on the phone, Julian?
Yeah, we have nobody online.
Okay. So let's move on from non-agenda public comment to our main topic for this evening, which is a look back at the year 2023 in the Planning Commission and all the brilliance that's sitting around me up here at the DIA, and our staff too, of course. So let's go ahead and jump into that. Ms. Jackie.
Hi, everyone. That'll be me. Can someone just confirm that you can hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Perfect. Let me get my screen shared, and then I will go ahead and get started. Right, so tonight, well, good evening, Planning Commissioners. For those I haven't met, my name is Jackie. I'm a management analyst with the Long Range Planning Team. Tonight is just a quick, fun presentation, just a recap of 2023 and the projects that the Planning Commission worked on throughout the year. We like to start with just a quick overview of the Department of Community Development, which is who you mostly work with. You mostly interact with the Long Range Planning Team, but these are just the other teams that contribute to the content that we share with you and who work with residents in Samamish every day. So our admin team are the ones who are answering our resident inquiries, either over the phone or in person at the front desk. They manage our contracts and financial guarantees, and they provide services like our passports and pet licensing. The current planning team is different from Long Range Planning, and they focus their time on managing permits and development review in the city. The building services is both our inspectors and our plan reviewers. So the inspectors spend most of their time in the field communicating with residents, and our plan reviewers spend their time buried in pages and pages of plans. Code compliance kind of speaks for itself, but they spend their time investigating complaints and enforcing the codes in the city. And then we have the Long Rangers, Long Range Planning Team, like myself, who help focus on policy and regulations and also some special projects. Our Planning Commission support staff starts with Julian. He's an office assistant, and he's the Planning Commission Coordinator. He's joined by Evan, who is a senior management analyst, and he's the Planning Commission liaison, so they're the ones you have probably the most communication with. David and Kelly are our director and deputy director for community development, and Miriam is our planning manager, and she leads the Long Range Planning Team and the admin team. So we just like to put together some numbers for 2023 that kind of shows what all these teams do throughout the years. And I won't read. I'll let you read all the numbers. But a lot of the projects and especially the code cases, they can be very time-consuming and involve working directly with residents every day and being out in the field. So these numbers are something that we track and also that our teams are very proud of. A lot of them run pretty similar to previous years, but it's always interesting to see what grows and what changes. We'll just go over a review of what the Planning Commission achieved over the year. Back in January, we kicked off the Climate Action Plan and came back several times throughout the year and wrapped that up in October with the public hearing and adoption. The Housing Diversification Toolkit, which was originally the Housing Action Plan, started back early 2022, and that was adopted in June of 2023 after a very long, fun process. The 2024 Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update has been a long time in the making. That will be coming back to the Planning Commission this year, so that one is ongoing. And then you all completed public hearings for the Stormwater Code, Enforcement Code Updates, Residential Consistency Code Amendments, Annual Docket and PROS Plan, and then we cricked off the Critical Areas Ordinance Update last fall, last October. So those were some of the major projects that you focused on throughout the year, but there are also other topics and projects that were presented. So overall, it was a very full calendar for 2023. Another fun project that we wanted to highlight was the first Samamish block party, which was held back in September at the Central Campus. And the goal of the block party was to have a community event similar to our parks events, which are incredibly successful, but we wanted to have an event that was specifically to help the public interact and engage and learn about our city's major policy projects. And it was an opportunity for staff to get feedback on those projects and community input. So overall, the event was a big success. We estimated roughly 350 to 400 people attended, and we had 11 booths that were mostly run by staff that were all based on an element of the comprehensive plan. And then there were also food trucks and carnival games and raffles, and it was a really fun event, and we had some really great volunteers show up as well. And then last, we just wanted to wrap up with some reflection questions for our Planning Commissioners. So I'll give you guys a chance to speak and address and give us some feedback for how some approaches that you'd like us to use moving forward as we look ahead at 2024. So the questions are, which 2023 project are you most proud of completing and why? What are some of the lessons learned from the work completed in 2023? And then looking ahead, 2024 is going to be very busy with some very large projects, and staff would like to know what existing approaches or tools that we've used that you'd like to see continued to support your review? And are there any tools or approaches that you would like staff to consider using moving forward? So I can hand it back to somebody in the room if you want to facilitate answering some of the questions, but if you have any questions for me, please let me know.
This could be kind of a free-for-all wide open, so who wants to talk first? Do you have your light on there, Ajay? Go ahead. Couldn't quite see it.
So first, I wanted to say, I was hoping you'd run this with the background of chariots of fire. Can you go back to the previous slide? No, sorry, a couple of slides back, so one more slide back. Yeah, so we're here. The Housing Diversification Toolkit, that was a great effort. Are we seeing, going to see some of that show up in some format? As we discussed just before this meeting, is there going to see some of that in some format in 2024 as well? Because that was some great work which started off. I think we need to keep that as a continuing focus.
Absolutely. That's a great question, and Kelly and I were just talking about that earlier today. So as we start to look at some of the work for Town Center that we'll be reviewing in 2024, that's kind of a continuation of some of the tools in the Housing Diversification Toolkit, and we're also going to be doing some work on the TDR program. So that's what's slated for '24, and then there'll be more to come as we look for the work plan for '25 and onward.
Great. That's great to hear, because it looked like we're done with spring and stop, but it's great to hear that we will continue that work as it goes. And the one slide before, which was the slide showing of the team, I don't know who did that, but it was remarkably close to reality. Thank you so much.
Go ahead, Carrie.
I'll go ahead. All right. Well, one of, one interest, you know, one proud moment, one of many, was getting the most recent newsletter in my mailbox and opening it up and seeing, I think it was the Stormwater Code Enforcement blurb, and it was just, and then also just reading the rest of it as well, because I do watch the meetings, and everything in there was something I already knew about. And so on the very first page was those enforcement work that we helped you all with, and it was just really neat to see in real life something that we did up here. And so that was, made me very proud, and like I said, the rest of it as well. So I kept, I keep a lot of those, and I'm really going to take that with me as I interact with the community and say, "Look, like, this is what is happening in the meetings. It's stuff right here that affects you day to day." And so just having that connection was really, was a really neat experience.
Saad, go ahead.
You asked a question. You asked a question, what in 2023, which project are most, that we are most proud of completing? I would say that the Housing Action Plan was really, really eye-opening for me. I learned a lot and listening to discussion and the comments and so forth. And also the Climate Action Plan, these are the two, the most important projects that I'm proud of. We contributed in a little bit, but be a part of the team that looked at it, and finally, I'm glad that the council took the action of adopting it.
John, you want to next?
Sure. So Ajay stole some of my thunder, and the Housing Diversification Toolkit project was a real highlight. And as others have already mentioned, that incremental process of learning, going forward, adjusting is a really good model, I think, particularly for this update that has so many changes coming at us. And as the entire Planning Commission has said in the past, the continual community outreach and communication is really critical. Carrie and I were talking before the meeting, and she was saying that before she moved out here, she didn't know anything about what was going on in her East Coast city. Maybe there wasn't anything going on in East Coast city. You know, I think that reflects the experience of a lot of our community members, that unless there's something that's directly impacting them right in the here and now, not so much attention paid. But what we're, you know, the comp plan reaches out dozens of years, and it's really critical, I think, that there's some, some understanding in the community of what's going on. You know, the old director rule is no surprises, and so that's, that's kind of what we're, we need to aim for. I also want to mention that we had a rough spot in one of our meetings last year, and it was embarrassing for us. And again, as Carrie said, our minds were going a mile a minute and our mouths were silent. But I really appreciate the community and city's quick and powerful response. It was important. That's it. Thanks.
Thanks, John. Go ahead, Mike.
All right. Well, actually, John, I'm glad that you mentioned that. That was on my list as well. It's an important lesson for us in both how the city reacted and how we reacted. In terms of project, and I'm disappointed with project and not projects, so I also felt like the Housing Diversification Toolkit. And also, you mentioned you, but I think in that particular case, it was really awesome to see how the staff and consultants adjusted to the changing climate changes from Pugetstown Regional Council. So it made it more difficult, and it was good to see how we were able to adjust and learn. But I also mentioned, and Carrie touched on this, like the Stormwater, I really felt like there were things that were in that, some of the details, where it was good to feel like we were being listened to and that there was some additional, I don't know, common sense or whatever in terms of how some of the code was being adjusted. So really appreciate the opportunities to contribute in those ways. Thank you.
I'll take my turn and make a couple of off-the-cup comments. One thing I'll say is that in my regular daytime life, I deal with lots of different people and different teams of people, people that I'm in charge of and people that I work for and people that I work with, and, you know, it's a lot of people. And I would, I point that out just to say that I really appreciate the staff that we work with. You know, in the time that I've been on the Planning Commission, I really have been surprised at how every single person on the staff has been the kind of person that you can count on to, you know, follow up and do things. It's just been a great experience, and that's actually pretty rare. In my experience, when you work with a team of people and you cycle through a lot of people, and we do that some here, it's rare that you work with a team of people that are all consistent and that you enjoy working with. So kudos to you guys. Great job. It's been fun working with you so far. We're going to do some more next year, at least I'm going to get to do that. You're going to have to put up with me for another year in some, some respect, but the people make the difference in a lot of the things that you do, and we have a great group of people here, and I think that makes it fun. It makes people look forward to coming to the meetings. It makes the work less of a burden. So thank you in that respect. I'd want to definitely express my appreciation for the interactions that I've had with the staff over the years. The other thing I wanted to say is that, so, you know, I ended up on the Planning Commission after an unsuccessful run for City Council in 2017, and it was one of the most fortunate things for me because I've enjoyed this work so much over those six years. And part of the reason is because the work that the Planning Commission does, and our other commissions are this way too, as Carrie, I think, said, and others have kind of suggested, the work that we do frequently has more of a direct impact on people's daily lives or at least something that they're trying to accomplish or some, something that as a citizen of Samamish they're involved in. So, you know, in some respects, for me, the Stormwater Enforcement Code, which in many ways is a backwater thing, that's kind of a funny thing to say, but it's kind of a backwater thing because it's, it's not the comprehensive plan, it's not a big thing, but it definitely can have a direct impact on people's day-to-day activities and sometimes when people get themselves in a tough spot or something. And I would just suggest that I'm proud of the things that we do that make people's lives either better or less worse in the community, and I would encourage that any of the topics, and some of the topics we are going to touch on in 2024 are large and broad and deep, and, and they can be very theoretical or very, you know, high-minded thinking of what could happen, but we should always keep a clear focus on how the things that we might imagine happening at 50,000 feet really affect people at 500 feet, because it does really affect people. And they don't always know it because they're not paying attention if there's not a problem. They don't even always realize the work that we do because we don't have a big crowd that ever shows up here. It's kind of become a little bit of a humorous thing. But the thing is, the work that we do really does affect people, and when they run into that problem, whatever it is, their neighbor's cutting down a tree and shouldn't have, and the tree ordinance applies, or, you know, there's a big storm and their yard floods or their neighborhood floods, the things that we do really do affect people in the community. And whether they know it or not, and whether they can appreciate that or not, or any of that, I'm proud to say that as a, we were trying, I was trying to figure it out, 25-year resident of this community, and as a six-year person on the Planning Commission, I'm really proud to say that I think that we do things that help people in the community. And so let's always keep our focus on not just the theory, but the practice and the implementation and how it affects people day-to-day who really live, work, and raise their kids and, and do all of those things in our city. They're our neighbors, they're our families, and we can have a difference, make a difference in their lives and their experience, so we should keep that in mind. Again, it's been a great experience so far. I'm looking forward to 2024. Lots of things to do, and I'm going to try my best to help continue to make it fun and to do my pre-work a little bit, that's my resolution, do my pre-work a little bit more diligently in 2024. How long do resolutions last? I'm not sure. Okay. Anybody else?
Well, that's going to be tough to top, Mark. But I like how you've been adding puns and making it more enjoyable to start off the year. Actually, you also answered a few of the other questions, but I did also want to add a few things about lessons learned and some advice for focus. So I've actually made a little bit of a list on that one. So I think it was wise. We had a couple of meetings canceled and no reason to have a meeting if there's not something to really cover, but of course, in 2024, with so much to be done, we should really try to avoid having to cancel any of those meetings. I thought that the workshop with the council and the commissions was great. We got a ton accomplished, super efficient. And I have to believe that for staff, that makes it a lot easier too, because you're not going to one group and another group and another group and then coming back again. So that might be something we might want to do a little bit more of in 2024, especially with so much. So that, that might be something we might want to do a little bit more of in 2024, especially with so much to do. I also think, and this I thought was really highlighted for me, at least with the Climate Action Plan and to some extent Housing, that it's important to be clear what the city can do and what the city relies on private enterprise or the residents to do. I know I felt like the Climate Action Plan was making a lot of promises that actually really will require residents to do something differently. And we may be able to influence that through code and regulations and all, but, but only to an extent. So that's, that was something that I hadn't fully appreciated before we started to run into that with the Climate Action Plan. As far as, you know, some of the things to do for 2024, I mentioned a couple in that, that list of lessons learned. I also think it'd be nice to have some of the presentations prior to the meetings. I always feel like sometimes those presentations have some clarity that would be nice in terms of our prep. Maybe better to have a little bit more view of what's coming up. I know we have the agendas, but that's pretty brief. And, and so what, how far along completion are we with things like, you know, Climate Action Plan is going to continue for next year. You know, how much of that are we going to be involved with as Planning Commission? I mentioned about the workshops. Sometimes it's helpful to have a decision matrix to be able to help weigh those various trade offs. We've, I think we've seen those maybe once or twice in the years that I've been on the commission. And one other thing, it's a little bit of a flyer, but maybe, Mark, you mentioned this in terms of the importance of the, to the community. And I know that some of the planning commissioners, when we're making comments, sometimes it's also to help kind of illustrate or to inform those who might be listening out there about some key topics. But it might be helpful to think about how we're communicating, not just getting the information ahead of time through surveys and listening visits and all that, but how we're communicating why decisions are being made to the city. So there's, that's my list of like what we've learned and what we might be thinking about as we move into 2024. Thank you.
Ajay?
Yeah, I want to, I also want to thank our people, members of the community, Paul, Mary, and you are our, you're as regular as us when it comes to these meetings. And also to the other members who have come in. The discussion that we had about East Lake Samamish Parkway, Siberia Planning and all those things shows how people now are looking at these Planning Commission meetings or the city meetings to be able to figure out an option that will work for the future. I think that's the, that's a start. At least for me, it felt like this is a start that we should just continue going forward. And if there is any way that we can get more involved, get that message out to them and have more amazing food with more members of the community coming to see us. Things like that, just so that we can get that message out and get the participation in. Thank you.
Anybody else? Sayed?
I was wondering if there is any way that you can provide some information to the community as far as what we're doing and things that, that we, we have taken care of it. And it would be really nice, for instance, I happen to live in Sahali and we have a newsletter. And each month we know that the board has taken action on the following. So I can see some of those items. It would be really useful that you can include some blurb into that as far as what, what the commission has done and things that they're looking at it and all that. That would be useful. Also, you asked for additional tools and approaches. I'm a strong believer of the PowerPoints and the material and that. I would appreciate, I believe that Mike, Mike also mentioned it, if you can get some of these ahead to us. So if we have any question when we look at it, then we will prepare to kind of bring it up and ask the staff to clarification, to clarify some of those issues that we have seen already in a PowerPoint presentation, particularly on some of these complicated issues. So that would be really useful.
Carrie or John?
Sure. From lessons learned, a lot of them are, are for myself. I don't, I think that I guess the vision, we were able to rework the vision, I think, maybe in 2022. But that really showed me how much we, our suggestions can, can make an impact. So that was really fun to, to do that and see either, even if it was just a word, you know, work its way in. And so for me, that, they gave a lot of perspective. And then also just, you know, a growth as, as a person sitting here, thinking about the decisions we made and then still thinking about them weeks later. And maybe I would have done it differently. And so it's been a great opportunity for personal reflection to see how I would, you know, do it better next time, either here or somewhere else. So I really appreciate that opportunity. And I also am a third for potentially getting the PowerPoints in the presentation, even if they're not done. You know, maybe that's a time constraint, but I think that would help us formulate more questions on certain topics beforehand.
Go ahead, John.
Yeah, I would echo comments about getting the materials to us early. Although I'm with Mark in terms of New Year's resolutions of making sure I'm as prepared as I can be to come to the meeting. I want to thank my fellow commission members. I've been on just over a year now, maybe a year and a half. And this has been a wonderful experience and great, great teamwork, working with the commission members. And of course, as Mark said, great, great support from the staff and, and some really diligent work. I know trying to pin PSRC and the county and the state down on some of the housing stuff was a monumental, monumental effort. Fortunately, PSRC came through with some real clarity that kind of led us out of the box and, and gave us a way forward. Yeah, going forward, I, I think our teamwork, I want to thank everyone for, and hope, hope that goes forward. But I don't think I have much more to ask or answer than has been said by others. So thank you.
You know, whenever somebody asks me, well, what's going on with the city, if they know I'm on the commission, I'm always glad to be able to tell them what we do on the Planning Commission. And I think that's probably a comment on the fact that we do the right things. Lots of people don't have a clue and, and then they'll ask and you can tell them about it. Usually you have to simplify quite a bit, otherwise they lose interest pretty quickly. But, and I would also echo what John said, is I really appreciate the commissioners that I serve with. You know, I know you guys all do it for the fame and glory and the financial benefits. But the reality is having a group of people that shows up with positive intent all the time, even if we don't agree, makes a big difference. So I'll thank you for that. I look forward to 2024 and I hope that at the end of 2024, at the beginning of 2025, we'll have the same discussion and everybody will have the same smiles on their face. And hopefully I'm going to be a little bit smarter by then. Any final thoughts? Great. Oh.
It's a very selfish follow up question to the last question, actually. In 2024, part of the work that you guys will be doing on several different projects is code review, right? Proposed code amendments. And I think in this last year, we started using a Jot form to try to collect all of that. And so I was curious if that was an effective tool for you all, if you have other preferences. That would be really helpful for us as staff to know now so that we can start working on things if that's not the best model.
What do you guys think?
I'm not sure what she's asking.
The Jot form?
Question was whether we liked the Jot form as a way to provide feedback or not?
I found it easy to use. So I, I, I thought it was helpful. And it would just, I felt also like it, just took it and sent it to wherever you needed it to go. And so that was helpful, easy.
So my comment on the, the Jot form, I thought it was really valuable for the very detailed stuff. You know, the detailed code stuff. I don't see it working as well for the big conceptual projects. But it kind of puts our feet to the fire to do our homework too.
Well, the shoe's on the other foot. You've taken my point. But yes, that was the other feedback that I had. The Jot form is great. It's fantastic. But if you have a particular point of view to do this thing, if there was a much wider concept, there is a why question that's involved or if there is a how that we are doing for this thing, the Jot form was kind of falling a little short.
So I'd also turn that back to you. And is it helpful for staff? And if it is, that's great, you know, so.
It's very helpful for us so we don't have to track all the emails. We can export the results and work from there.
So I will acknowledge that I didn't always do good with that. And so you can, but, but I will say that any of those kind of tools, sometimes it takes a little time, you know, to get people used to it and train some of us who are not as quick on the uptake. Probably have to keep that in mind a little bit. Anything else?
Oh, so we're going to get at least one new commission member. And I just can't emphasize enough that the new, new commission members and even us that have been around a year or two, get the training we need for public disclosure and rules and city policies and all of that stuff.
John, I really appreciate that you didn't say old commission members. If I caught that. All right. Anything else from anyone? Sayed, go ahead.
I just wanted to ditto what Mike was suggesting. A joint commission with the city council was very useful. I would, I would really like to see more often, maybe instead of once a year, maybe every quarter or so, if it is. Of course, the council has to agree to it, but it was a very useful tool.
Okay. Thanks. Fun. Probably the fun, the most fun discussion we'll have in 2024. But I do appreciate it.
And I just wanted to respond to this. The feedback we have received tonight is so valuable. And our next meeting on January 18th, I'll add to the agenda. We'll follow up on some of these things and see how we can integrate some of these suggestions. So I'll provide a brief update after talking to our team so that we can carry on into 2024 with some improvement. But it has been a fantastic year, '23. There's so much to be proud of and the work that we accomplished. And we're going to do the same thing in '24, so get ready. And I doubt we'll be counseling meetings. We're going to need every meeting spot we can get.
Okay, thanks, Kelly. Let's move on and do agenda related public comment. Who, I'm guessing here, who wants to make agenda related public comment? Paul, you want to go first?
Hello, Planning Commissioners. It's Paul Stickney-Samamish. You enjoyed the meeting, all the comments, staff, all of you agree with all those things. And really insightful, well thought out things. I am going to go over some of this first page, but first a couple of high points. In the last comment I made, I talked about the false premises of housing supplies not meeting needs for, for lifestyle and, and legacy. Something that we have to get in our community is to deal with another set of false premises. And that is the assumptions that go into what guides our housing policy. And two major things are, are missing. Knowing quantified needs for all economic, demographic and workforce housing over a cycle of life and comparing consequences. That's on, one of the pages I've got attached here is if we don't get housing supplies optimally balanced, which I called Goldilocks housing. So if we don't get housing just right, there's a lot of consequences for that as opposed to getting it right. And now really is the time because we haven't addressed this in 20 years. And I'm going off script. I'm talking about something off the bat. And just in the last month or two, I figured out an analogy that to me had a lot of power. And that is the, the Goldilocks approach. And when you use it in our solar system, and now I'm going to make these, these numbers up. These are not accurate. They're just an example. If, if our planet was only 75 million miles from the sun, we'd be way too hot. If we were 115 million miles away, we'd be way too cold. We're 93 million miles away. The numbers don't matter. That we're in the habitability zone matters. So I'm going to share a couple of numbers tonight that might shock some people, but just recognize these numbers come from a deep study over many years of how economic, demographic and workforce needs match with housing. So I'm just going to start with that. Okay, now I'll get in to the comment. I agree with making this fun and exciting. I actually wrote that down here. It's time for solutions to false premises with Goldilocks housing. Our 22,500 houses are out of balance with needs over lifetime and, and legacy. I mentioned in the earlier comment that we have 19,000 homes built by King County and 3,500 built by our community since 1999. We also have those same numbers happen to mirror something else. We have roughly 85% of our housing stock is detached, single family. And 15% is what I call a DDS housing, which is different, diverse and smaller housing. Enrich and sustain, or I should mention here that the needs within our community, based on the study that I've done, which is in part of the package that I'm going to mention at the end of this with the Fiscal Sustainability Task Force, is the lower threshold to the upper threshold of the number of different and diverse units we need to add is between 10,000 and 26,000. I'm suggesting starting with 6,000, which is only 60% of the way towards the lowest threshold to meet different and diverse housing in the categories I discussed. Affordable housing, prices from 500 to a million two and higher numbers, mostly in centers. And I'm suggesting that instead of adding 2,000 to town center for 4,000 total, we add 6,000 to town center for 8,000 total. And then I'm going to get back on script and read a few things here. One thing I'd like to mention is that I'm not recommending that our neighborhoods absorb much growth, if any. If a neighborhood wants a little bit of growth, then that could be something that they would want to desire, have it be incremental and uniquely tailored for themselves. So we have to get past fear, uncertainty and doubt. A lot of people are really get concerned over numbers, which is why I explained the Goldilocks concept to start with. I'd like to jump into the old TV show, the $64,000 question from the 50s and 60s or 70s where, which was a very important thing to ask. So I'm going to ask a question. In Samamish, we have built as a community 7,000 houses since we incorporated, half from King County in the pipeline, 3,500, and half from our city. How does it compare for the 7,000 homes that were built, 6,000 single family, 1,000 multifamily, since 1999, half King County and half Samamish, but they were built while we were a city? How does this suggestion compare to that? How does putting 8,000 different and diverse units in town center that gets us to only 60% of the lowest range of the habitability zone? How do those two things compare? Here's how. Additional traffic generated will be a quarter to a third of the 7,000 homes we've already built. Unplanned car trips, none. The current EIS can handle exactly what I'm talking about and more. We, stormwater and impervious surface, only 15 to 20% of the 7,000 homes that we built since since 1999. Students generated, 20%. 80% fewer students from the 8,000 units I'm talking about in town center as compared to the 7,000 that have been built in the city since 1999. Acreage developed, 10% of the acreage compared to the 7,000 houses that have been built. And last, walkability, transit, health, climate change, per capita car trips, DEIB and fiscal, all enriched and sustained. Take a look at the city's fiscal sustainability plan at the third and fourth meeting, look at, at the public comments and you can read all the specifics behind this plan. So we got to get outside the box to fix this, to enrich and sustain the community. Appreciate the chance to speak.
Thanks, Paul. Mary?
Hello, Mary Victor, Sammamish, 23 years. I wanted to start off by saying, I've been doing this for almost 10 years now because there are problems in the area where I live. It's not because there's something wrong with me, it's because of the area. And almost all the topics that we need to fix that are on this slate for 2024. And I've seen commissions come and go, I've seen council members come and go, I've seen most of the staff come and go. And I just wanted to say that the commissions that we have, including all of you and hopefully the new people, and the staff that we have are really truly wonderful. So I did owe everything Mark Boffman said, because I don't want to use my seven minutes for that, but really the staff is very genuine, very easy to work with, very good at following up. And the commission members are, are very dedicated to their job. And I think Said spoke twice at the last meeting, I think Carrie spoke, and I know Mike came and spoke at meetings. Mark Boffman yesterday was actually pitching things at the park meeting before that happened. And Ajay, I think, has actually been a representative to try to get information for some of the things. So you guys are doing things outside of the commissions. Right now, they have kind of a shortage of people, I think, applying for the new spots, particularly the sustainability. So if you know anybody, anybody that you think is worthwhile, they should sign up because I think the things are due tomorrow, so they can actually get appointed at the next meeting. But basically, the basis of what you do is very important, it's kind of stair steps. And if you didn't do the work, you'd never see it happen, the commission. And the commission, while they can override you, I think most of the time they actually agree with the work that you're doing and you guys change it and you respond to it. The request that I have, that's the same request I have every year, we get up here and we talk and we email and maybe they get rid or not. If you don't get the whole thing, fine, I come up with a lot of topics, I do a lot of research. But listen to what everybody says, even hostile people at the microphone, because a lot of times there's one word or one concept that if you think about it and you write it down, that goes somewhere and that gets done. And if we just speak and you don't write anything down and you don't say, hey, that's a good idea, incorporate it, it turns out that our time really kind of gets wasted except for the overall impact of building it up. And if you really want people to attend this next year, and you're going to want them to attend, because you guys are changing the foundational roots of what builds Sammamish as it is and as it will be. And if we don't get the right things, it won't grow in the right way. And Paul Stickney does the best job ever. He's been doing this, I think, a year and a half longer than me. He knows housing better and the stuff he's talking about really, really needs. You just can't let the final 15% build out, you just can't not do town center. You have to get the numbers right. What we do with TDRs will affect how town center builds and the affordability. We'll save all the critical areas that have been getting devastated for the last 13 years while we've been waiting for the critical areas ordinance. And it's just, there's so many things that have been so important. I did try to do dockets to get some of them earlier and I was always told, oh, we don't have time for that this year, we don't have budget. We have the budget and the time this year, but it's super, super important. So I know you guys ask really good questions, you write things down and you work together and you're very respectful. But if there's any way we can take some of the ideas and maybe it'll even happen, like sometimes I'll go to a meeting and you'll see a post follow-up from me, because I don't even think about it until after I've been at the meeting and it's settled in my head. I think if those communications through JotForm or whatever would be really great. I like JotForm, but I'm never sure if it actually gets received by anybody. And I know with the docket, sometimes I'll send it in, Miriam didn't get it, but then two days later she does. So if you are going to use JotForm, I think it's great because it's the simplest tool to use and we need to track those. The other thing that is personally the most frustrating for me in the world is I speak rapidly, I say a lot, I speak on a lot of different topics. I used to just speak on stormwater, but stormwater is so integrated into all the other things we're doing right now. And we got a lot of the stormwater stuff fixed through people listening. In order to speak and have feedback on documents and never get it put in the matrix or the thing written down, nobody ever responds to it. And you have to go meeting after meeting hoping to say that, like I, I think I said the same thing 10 times over for the climate. I think none of that stuff got written down. I'm not going to be on the Sustainability Commission, but we really need things people can do now for climate. If everybody waits, it'll be too late. So whatever, whatever you guys can do that you can actually take some of that input and ground it and get it moving forward, that's what's going to help. And then when people see that or they hear, oh, public comment last meeting, they had this and this got changed, so I should go, because I can only go once. But you know, I understand that you can actually make a big impact in doing that. I think that's important. And it's super important, I know it's hard, we're supposed to speak respectfully, but sometimes people are really emotionally geared up. Sometimes they use words you don't like to hear or they'll say things that kind of sound mean. But what they're doing is they're really talking about stuff that really gets to them. And you have to listen to it because that comes from somewhere. And sometimes you can't relate to it or sometimes you can't do things with it. But I think any and all input is good. And I've even had times that Paul Stickney and I 100% disagree on things and then three weeks later we talk it through and we come out with something better than what we had before. And that's where you get really good leadership and teamwork and buildability. So those are the things that I've learned from professional, I worked 13 years in corporate world and I also was contractor for things. And now I work for my family and we do a lot of land use planning things. And the thing that I have learned most, and you got an email that, you know, I just sent it to City Commission, which is why I was late for the potluck. It's on, the land tells us what to do, they're looking at what to do with Sahali. And they want to spend like a million dollars just to look at plans and have 10 options and Said spoke twice to that. It's just really hard to see that they can do that. Like you're not going to be able to do that many options for Sahali. So I dug back in the history, Phil Doherty is a guy that wrote for King County on some grants and he wrote up some great, tells you all about the history of Sahali and how the Gulf stuff happened. The last three pages are the landslide that occurred in 1982. It's bigger than four acres, it was like 800 feet long. It was in the Sammamish part, not just in the King County part. King County built the road and the stuff they tried to do to fix it. The reason you can't do massive stuff with Sahali is it's a landslide, erosion hazard, steep slope area. And if you think, oh, the road's fixed now because they dealt with the water, well, we have climate change, different things happening. And Evans Creek Preserve has recently had landslides. The city never maps their landslides, they never talk about them, they don't record them, which I find super annoying, which maybe it'll be something I'll get fixed this year, because I'm mapping them and writing them down when I can know about them. But there's really problems in that area. So you're not going to be able to put a fine lane road, you're not going to be able to have sidewalks that go to nowhere. Are they ever going to put the sidewalks on 202? No. Maybe the way to have no sidewalks there is you send them off where the barriers are or use Northeast 50th, which is down before, or you do trails through that Emerald Necklace, or you do some sort of connectivity through neighborhoods to get people walking, biking. There's a lot of kids now that ride those little scooters on the micro mobility, they don't wear helmets, they go pretty fast, they go on regular roads. I mean, we just need to be able to incorporate those people. So I'm glad we have the trail, that's another solution, is getting people east, west down there instead of sending them over to Sahali. So those are my ideas for next year. Thanks for all you do, keep it up.
Thanks, Mary. Hang on a second, I'm going to write something down. All right. I can barely spell more than one word, so. Julian, do we have anybody online or on the phone? All right. Anything else, last comments on the calendar or anything from staff? Nope. Okay, I guess, would somebody like to move to adjourn?
Don't move.
Second.
It's been moved to second that we adjourn. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If there's no, thank you, everyone. Take a look at your calendar and we'll see you on January 18th.